We now call this meeting to order. If you could please rise if you are able and pay attention to Councilmember Jensen for the invocation, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a bittersweet moment for me because this is the last time as I sit with this council that I have the opportunity to offer an invocation. And so, instead of inviting someone this evening, I decided that I would offer a prayer for the person who occupies my chair when I'm gone and the next council. The work of this body is incredibly important to moving our community ahead and its future. And so, my hope is that we can continue the work that we've all started and create yet a better, more exciting Tepica than we have now. So with that, let us pray. Dear Lord and Savior, please help all of the members of this body, both the current members and its future members endeavor to make our community the best it can for all of its races, for all of its residents, for all of the people regardless of where they come from, where they're going, what their experiences are, and what they think success is. I would hope that you could guide this council to create the community that everyone wants for all of us. In your name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have several presentations this evening. We first start with the Finance Quarterly Report. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Director of Administratives and Financial Services Jessica Lemondola will come forward and present the Finance Quarterly Report.
Good evening. How do I get it to full screen? Sorry. All right. So tonight, we're discussing the second quarter report. So we have the first six months in. We're a little bit beyond that, so we have a little bit more information. But moving on to the first page, total revenues are up slightly. So that's all funds, about 1.3 percent. You'll notice that the general fund is only up about 0.2 percent, which is really reflective of property tax growing, but also sales tax and franchise fees coming in under budget. So both of those are economically sensitive. Sales tax, we'll discuss on the next slide. And then franchise fees are down due to the West Star December rebate. And then some of our other large funds, and we'll discuss the bond sale a little bit later, but for the water, wastewater and stormwater fees, those are largely reflecting the rate increases from previous years. Activity is fairly similar. All right, moving on to the next slide. So sales tax is one of those that, you know, we've discussed in the past, and it's an area that we focus on because it is a large proportion of our general fund and then also a variety of funds. So on a cash basis, which includes some income that would have been reported in our 2018 audit, we're still down year over year about 3.3 percent. So that's also, you know, it's obviously a little troubling. But one of the items just to keep in mind is that '18, at least the beginning of the year, which is what we're comparing, was a very good year compared to some of the previous year. So there was some additional activity that we received sales tax from. If you look at the second chart down, you'll see our budgeted amount at $31.4 million. And basically, if you go all the way to the right, we would need 5.6 percent growth in the second half of the year to meet budget. It's unlikely. Even in a good year, 5.6 percent in the latter part of the year is just very unlikely. And so you'll see if you go up from there, if we received no growth for the rest of the year compared to 2018, we would still be under budget by 1 percent. And then in order to meet our 2019 budget, we would have to see a fairly, oh, sorry, if we perform the rest of the year at 3.7 percent, which is the general fund, we would be about $1.7 million under budget. So from, you know, our budget team has focused a great deal on the projections and trying to look at the market in terms of sales volume. And at this point, we think we'll be close to that 0 percent growth for the rest of the year. So we are currently anticipating about a $30.6 million year-end sales tax. So what we're doing, we're focusing on the expense side. The three-month lag for hiring has helped. We're also looking at just other areas that we manage the budget. So we're still projecting the year-end will be on or close to budget. But the sales tax obviously is one of those that you start to just focus on more. One positive item, the reason we think that it'll be closer to that 0 percent growth versus the 3.7 down that we're seeing is that the latter part of 2018 had our, the cycle of decline had started. So as you get towards the latter part of the year, the year-over-year numbers don't need to grow as much to see some growth, if that makes sense. Okay. Going on to the next slide, expenditures. Total expenses up 2.2 percent. You can see the general fund numbers are down slightly, and that's reflection of, you know, diligent management, looking on the personnel side, but then also being conscious of the non-personnel items. And then water, stormwater and wastewater, they're all consistent with their budget. It's consistent with revenues going up to meet operations and capital and other maintenance So at the end of it, our summary, economically sensitive revenues are challenging us a bit, and you can see that in the first slide with sales tax and franchise fees. Personnel expenses continue to increase slightly, but that's consistent with our union increases and then just overall in the budget. We do anticipate being closer on budget with our personnel expenses. The variation from budget that we're seeing or year-over-year performance is all consistent with what our budget team can manage. So we still anticipate, like I said earlier, the general fund being on or close to budget. That's the end of the presentation. It's fairly brief. I sent out yesterday the quarterly report. I am open for questions, concerns.
Questions or concerns from the body? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. Oh, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Good evening. You know, we passed with our budget to fund Pabst Landing and some of the senior citizens. How are we looking on that? Can you tell? Because I'm hearing you say, you know, we're kind of on budget, we're kind of not.
Well, we're on budget on the expense side. Obviously, the revenue is challenging us a bit. In terms of the additional $40,000, is that what you're referring to that we're looking for? To find it within the year-end operations for 2019, that's our goal. We're still looking for resources. But I do have confidence in our 2020 budget that even if we are unable to find the $40,000 in 2019, that we'll still be able to locate savings in 2020. So some of the revenue items that we've historically been challenged to meet, we were able to adjust in the 2020 budget, take those down in our expenses in line. So I think that we will potentially have less variability in our overall performance. So I think we'll still be able to find $40,000, even if not in 2019, we think we can find it in 2020.
Okay. And I'm only asking because I've had people say thank you, and I do let them know, you know, what those stipulations were. So when I hear you say we're even on a good day, I know the last good day you ran out. Today, you're not running out. So, you know, the last time you were up here and you said you had a good day and you ran out.
Dropped the mic, just leaving.
Yeah, there you go. Today, I didn't see that. So, and I'm hearing some numbers here, so just kind of concern, that's all.
Well, what's interesting, I think, about that question is, last week, we saw savings in our refunding, and that obviously translates into the debt service fund and what we can do there. So as you alleviate pressure in certain funds, sometimes you're able to find resources in other areas. But I think the $40,000, we've heard that it's a priority from the body. So our goal is to locate that. You know, at the end of the day, other expense might have to come down. You know, there's a give and take there, but we hear that it's a priority. If we can't locate it in 2019, our goal would be to try to find that savings within the first quarter of 2020.
So you feel pretty good about it?
If I was an economist or had a crystal ball, I'd feel better. Obviously, if sales tax continues to tank outside of what our current parameters are, it'll challenge us more. But I think $40,000 within our large budget, we'll be able to locate it.
Okay. Thank you. You can run out now.
Okay. Well, not fast. We have a little bit of good news to share and a little bit, so, all right.
Any additional questions?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the next presentation, Development and Growth Management Quarterly Report. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Up next will be Director of Planning and Development, Bill Feinder, to talk about the growth.
Good evening. Pleased to be before you again for our second quarter report on development and growth management. To paraphrase Ms. Lemondola, it's been a good year. We had more than a good day. We have a good year. So if we jump right into looking at our activity for development and trends, we'll see that our overall permits, and this is projected out to the end of the year based on our first half performance, would be 9 percent above last year's permit total and 7 percent above the five-year average. So total volume of permit activity, a good indicator of investment in the community. So those are good signs. If you break that down and just look at that red line on that chart, which is commercial permits, you see it's starting to tick up, almost beginning to cross over the residential blue line, the residential permits are shown on the blue line. We're up 34 percent from last year on commercial permits and 28 percent over the five-year average. That's very impressive, given that we had three or four really good years prior to last year. So that is, that's coming, hopefully making up for last year, but that's coming out on the heels of a little bit of a down year last year. So very busy. When you look at the permit value, that's, so this is construction value. This is the amount these permits are adding up to construction-wise. We're at a, we're on pace to be at the highest we've been since the recession. Again, these aren't in constant dollars, so there is some, but if you look at the total value, we're 88 percent above last year. And that is, that is pretty staggering, 43 percent over the last five-year average. So again, kind of making up for last year's dip, if you will. All right, on the residential side, new units. Up till now, we have, we're doing good on our residential unit side, projecting 148 to the end of the year, which is 21 percent above last year if things stay at this pace. We do know of several developments and projects that are still to come, and they will probably hit this year, maybe. That is, and even if you look closer here, our red line is our new units. Our blue line there is our additions and rehabs, alterations. Again, it's starting to cross over. We're starting to have more new units beyond the additions and alterations, which we saw an uptick in last year. So kind of a different story this year than last year. When you look at where these are happening, the city is, again, increasing its share of residential units in the county over last year. Right now, we're at 58 percent. That's above the 49 percent we were at at the end of last year. If we stay there, if we don't go any higher or lower, that would be a 10, that would be the best since 2010 in terms of percentage of units in the city. So residential side, we're seeing good things. Commercial side, we're seeing good things. Here is for the second quarter, the top 10 permits per valuation. A lot of big projects in that second quarter that were permitted, starting with Sunflower Foundation, as many of you know, the rehabilitation of the BOM and Powerhouse Buildings up on the old Meninger Campus. Awesome project that's over nine, almost $10 million valuation. Also, several of the Stormont Vale Event Center permits were issued in the second quarter, up to about $9 million at this juncture. There are more to come on that. Our own Zoo's Cave Garden was permitted in the second quarter, a $5 million project. They're starting to form up the piers out there as we speak, so good progress on that. And the other big project, of course, was the Downtown Plaza that got permitted. That is also forming up quite well as we speak and has been noted here recently. So, as a takeaway from all this is we're busy. And one of the things that we want to do is measure our performance when we are busy to make sure we're still meeting our customers' expectations as well as our own. There's a lot going, so I'm going to show you just a couple of slides to finish up with and pull back the curtain a little bit on how we do that. There's a lot going on in this slide, so there are two things kind of to pay attention to. On the right-hand side, that's the overall permit approval times by, in the last four years, by year. You can see the light green, the tall green bar, that's 2016. The black bar on the right is 2019. So you can see in the preceding last three years, we've lopped off about three, three to four weeks of review time since 2016, and we've kind of settled in this six-week approval time period, about 42, 43-day average. We're at 42 days in the first half of this year. The other thing on this, and you, it's, I understand it's hard to see unless you can squint really well, the, on the left-hand side, you see the 13 reviewers, the review functions that we have for each, for new construction permits. Those are highly orchestrated, coordinated, our reviews getting, that we measure the time that they review permits. Each one through, since 2016, has gotten better and better and better. So we're trending in the right direction so that we have the most efficient process and get the permits turned around as quickly as possible. However, oops, where am I? So however, the, I still get questions from time to time about, hey, from an owner, from a client, applicant, where's my permit? Why is it being held up? And so we look into each one of those, and more often than not, I'd say a lot more often than not, what I end up finding is, the review period may be on track from staff, but that we might be waiting on the applicant still to respond to our comments. And until recently, we've never really had a good way to measure that. It's kind of been anecdotal. But by the magic of software, we started measuring it this year. So amazing what that software can do. So the red line on these, on this chart is showing the amount of time we typically wait for each one of those review functions to hear back from. And you can probably disregard that really long red bar, that's fire review. We do some deferred submittals. So we do wait a long time, but that's kind of normal. That's, that's kind of what we expect. With everybody else, in terms of the review function, we do end up waiting longer. When you average that all together, it kind of looks like this, where we have on the gray area, that's, that's staff review time. It's a seven-day average to review those permits. Yet we have a 16-day waiting time from the applicant. So those are the, that's the sort of thing that we're going to keep measuring. We don't have a baseline. We don't know how we did last year. We don't know how this stacks up. So this is our baseline this year, and we'll see how this progresses as we move on. But full transparency, though, we do have a set of permits that we have seen increased review times on. These are the commercial remodels. On the right-hand side, you can kind of see that black bar has gone up from the last two, three years. We have added actually seven days to that permit approval time. And so when we see that, and that's just for this first half of this year, and when we see that, we have to ask the question, why? We want to know why. Is that something we're doing? Is it something, or is it the wait times? And so we look at the wait times, we look at our initial review times. And again, not seeing any discernible change in our average, we look at the wait times again, and we get a similar picture than what we saw on the last types of permits. We're about doubling the number of days for wait versus our review. So we don't know if that's exactly why. We don't know, we don't have any other really explanation right now why that's going up without having more of a wait factored in. These types of permits should be going much quicker. They're just internal tenant improvements, don't involve 13 people, they involve seven or eight. So those typically go much, much quicker. So we'll keep our eye on that. But again, in terms of our internal review, we, we see, we see us, again, being, meeting our expectations, even though we're in the busy, busy season. And so with that, I thought you'd like to see that tonight, and I'll stand for, any questions beyond that?
Any questions for Mr. Feinder? Councilwoman Ellison.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Very good, very good. The only thing I wanted to point out in looking through this, and obviously it's not your control, but is very good news with all the permit, the values of the permits. The only thing disconcerting to me as I looked through it is, it appears of the top 10 permits, seven of them won't be on the tax roll. So that's, that's the only bad thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I knew you might point that out. I could have pointed that out too. And you're right, the impact is much less as if those were all private on the tax rolls. So it is a shot in the arm, construction-wise and otherwise activity to come, but you're right, absolutely right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Feinder, thank you for the report. You have a question on the, you know, when you have the staff time and the applicant days, is there, has there been any maybe discussion with, you know, say the engineers, for instance, on some of these things? Is there, is there something that's driving the time on this? I mean, you would think once, once an engineer firm, an architectural firm does a couple jobs here, they begin to know what you guys need and expect, and at a certain point, you would think that that would start decreasing. Is there anything that we're, as a city, I guess, need to change in that aspect? I mean, is there some subjectivity to it versus this is what we need every time?
Right. Good question. We ask ourselves the same thing, you know, because, in fact, and I'll get to your, I'm not sure how to answer your question, other than to say, the, we take it upon ourselves that this isn't just us sitting back and waiting. We actually, that magical software we have actually will prompt or alert us when something is taking too long. If we're waiting two weeks on something, there'll be an alert that we can then prompt the applicant on, things like that. So we're looking at what can we do? So that's one thing. Another thing would be, is it our, is it our expectations are not clear? Is it information we're asking for is not clear? And that, that could very well factor into it. I don't, I think that will differ from reviewer to reviewer, and that's the, so we look at, is something out of line? And if so, we'll then drill down to that particular review function and say, okay, what happened here? Electrical reviews are, are up. Well, we had both of our electrical inspectors out for a month because health and time off. It just happened, so, actually, that didn't, that didn't happen until after this quarter, but I suspect next quarter, we'll see a little bump in electrical reviews. Stuff like that. We're trying to pinpoint it, and so I would agree, we have to ask ourselves that. I don't have a good answer if that is what's happening. I will, I can tell you, there are, everybody's busy. That's not us. That's everybody outside here, and they're all scrambling to get stuff to us and I, and then get back to us. And so that is a good and a not-good thing, the way you look at it. But I'd be open to any suggestions as to how we can make our communication help lessen these times.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, on the review functions slide that Councilman Emerson was just referring to, are each of those separate permits?
Counselmember Mays, they are not. Thirteen reviewers, one permit. So for, so for instance, a new building being built, we get one set of plans in, a big fixed set of plans electronically, they go out to 13 different people, and each one of those looks at a certain part of that plan for a review. They will sign off on it, that it is approved for their function, but there is no separate permit. It's just a stamp for the bigger permit.
Okay. Well, you asked for suggestions, so I'll do a little armchair quarterbacking here. I mean, when I, when I look at this list of things, and I see erosion review, landscape review, site review, stormwater management, they seem a bit redundant. Is that, I mean, is it typical to have four different areas of review for, I mean, isn't that, that's all kind of dirt work for the most part, isn't it?
If we, if we had the dirt engineer, yeah, that would be great. But we, we don't, those are, those are really four separate things with the possible exception, and we're going to be taking a look at our stormwater reviews. So there's two, there's two, there's actually three types of stormwater reviews. You have the erosion control, stormwater quality, stormwater quantity. Those three reviews are done by two people. We're going to be looking at an RPI for that later on this year, and we're going to look at exactly, do we, are we doing it the most efficient way we can? So on that one, we know we have some issues we need to look at. On the others, unfortunately, landscape is, no, that is not related as to stormwater. The site, actually, site plan and, site plan and planning are very related too. That's another one we're going to look at. Can we have one person do more of that than having two people? So you're onto something. I mean, there are a couple there that do overlap.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Okay. One more question, please. When you go back to the residential permits, I think you had like 148 units on here projected. It seems like a while ago, we approved something to go in around Hummer Sports Park in the, and that was supposed to be over 100 units in and of itself. Plus, we've also done Horseshoe Bend and then the Sherwood, next door to Sherwood Park. So I mean, is this number like year-to-date, or are we, are those just slow to come online, or?
Yes. The three projects you mentioned would not be reflected in this first half of this year permits. The Horseshoe Bend, those are, those streets need to be put in, infrastructure needs to be put in. So those won't come on until next year, for instance. So the things you approved last year, the Misty Harbor and the Miller's Reserve, things that are getting their streets and their utilities in, should start showing up then in our single-family calculations. But most of in our single-family calculations. But most of the single-family are with plots that have been, are already out there, Rock Fire and Lawrence Bay and Miller's Glen, for instance. The bigger project, the one you talked about at Hummer, good to say that we have met with them. They have come back, and they weren't scared, right? We approved their zoning, but then we've waited here for about six months to, for them to get, gear up their plans. And so I suspect that'll be coming here soon. May not be this year, it could be this year, maybe next year.
Can't wait. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill, I have a question. So I know that all of those areas of expertise are pretty selective. Is there such a thing as like, super reviewer school, that you would then be able to maximize the 13 people and have training and certifications, certificates in all of these areas? And then you could just like really spread out these individuals so that you would have one-on-one contact? Because I know that one of the challenges that our developers, our developing community has, is that the constant interaction with different people and the different styles, whether it's perception or it's reality, it doesn't lend to you developing a relationship with somebody that could walk you through the process. So I'm pretty sure that this more than likely is a best practice in other communities, what we're doing here. But I just want to ask.
Yeah, let's take an example. So the building, the folks who review the building plans, that is a trade, that is a very specified type of training that they go through to know the building code and the fire code. And you heard me say fire code. So there is some crossover there. You wouldn't have the electrical person reviewing building plans. You wouldn't have the planner, hopefully not, review the building plans. So there are those specialties in terms of like a super user. That's...
Maybe that's not the right term, maybe like a case manager.
Yeah, exactly. And that's going to fall with one or two people. So before you submit a building permit, we do have a planner, and that's in the commercial side, that's Annie, Annie Driver, that coordinates what you need to do to get to the building permit. And so there is that person that we kind of, we created that, or we carved that out a couple of years ago. So she's, her and my call are kind of shepherding people through, before you get the permit. When you get to the permit and you submit it, now do you have somebody doing the same thing on that side? And the planner reviewers under Fran would be the ones that are kind of bird dogging, if you will, the projects and making sure that they are, the other reviewers are getting back to the client. Because they're really responsible for getting that permit through. But just so you understand, each one of those 13 people, they're not all communicating with one person on the client's side. Now, most of them are communicating with the architect or the civil engineer, or there might be a trade, electrical in there. So they speak to their like counterpart on the other side of the table, and that facilitates a better process, as opposed to going through a middle person. But we do have pre and post-permit, somebody that is shepherding folks through that, and we're, we are perfecting it and getting better. We're not perfect by any means.
No, and please understand, it was not a criticism. It's just my efficiency brain just going like, how do you, 13 people?
What will really help, and what we're moving, most of our permits to our electric, electronic reviews, yes, with electricity, electronic reviews where everybody is marking up the electronic plan, and they can see what the fire reviewer commented on, they can see what the plumber reviewer commented on. You can just, you can see everybody's comments, which is really, I think is a big help to move to what I think you're getting at.
Awesome. Thank you. Counselor Ortiz?
On that note, who follows through with contacting the applicant? I heard you say, you know, we're waiting on them for their information. Is there, like, after so many weeks, we contact them and say, hey, we're waiting on you?
We do. And that was a change. A few years ago, we need to get people used to, you know, our people, as you would say, our staff, to being proactive and saying, it is your problem if you're not hearing anything. So we do that with either the, we do have a, as I said, the building plan reviewer has taken that on to, that's Crystal and Lee, Lee Bird, Crystal Hockness. They look at who still needs to be replying. Like, if we have a late response, they would contact folks. We also have an incredible person, Jenny Taylor, who is our intake person at the permit counter, and she will do the same thing. Little red flag comes up, hey, this thing has been out there for three weeks now, or two weeks, let's follow up on it. So we do have people doing that.
Great. It's great to hear. Thank you.
All right. Great discussion. Thank you very much, Mr. Feinder. Now we have our last presentation, and I'll introduce Kayla Bittler and Chair Keith Warda from Momentum 2022 to give us a report.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. As the mayor said, I'm Keith Warda. I'm the volunteer leader, one of the volunteer leaders for Momentum 2022. Also want to acknowledge Mayor DeLaisla and Commissioner Cook as other tri-chairs for the community strategy. So we started the year with one year of implementation under our belt. We have four more years. We knew we were checking the boxes. We knew we were getting things done ahead of schedule. But we also knew we weren't connecting with the community. We weren't engaging the community in the way that we needed to. So we spent a lot of time, the first quarter this year, thinking about how we could implement the plan better, how we could involve more people. And part of that ended up being five days in New York with Bloomberg Harvard Initiative. Councilman Padilla was with us. And we've also spent a lot of time here in Topeka, thinking about how we could better communicate, how we could better implement the plan. We came up with three main areas that we've already had action on so far this year. Number one's public value statement. I want to just go forward to the next slide. This is what we came up with. We talked a lot about access to opportunity to everybody in our community, and also health, happiness, hope, and prosperity. Those are things that I think everybody in our community can relate to. We also talked about the organization. We created bylaws such that we know our roles and responsibilities now, and decision-making process is much more clear. And then finally, we talked a lot about our communication program and connecting with people, emotionally connecting with people. And so we had a Harvard graduate student here this summer. I hope many of you got to meet him. He helped with our communication plan. He created stories about our community, stories that relate to not only people in our community, but also Momentum 2022. So we're really excited about where we're going. We're not happy with just checking boxes. We want to connect to the community. We want everybody in the community to know what the community strategy is and to be involved in it. So Kayla's going to talk more about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So just as sort of a reminder, up on the screen are the five different pillars of Momentum 2022. And so what I want to do tonight is just kind of walk through each one of those pillars and talk a little bit about some of the community wins that we're seeing in each one of these areas. So the first area is develop homegrown talent. So our Top City Interns program was wildly successful this year. We had 190 interns participate from 12 different hometown states. With respect to collaborative data, one of the items that we've really started to discover as we've brought together partners in the education realm, is that a lot of those partners purchase the same or very similar data from the same sources. So we're starting to have conversations about, okay, how can we purchase this dataset one time and collaborate with this data? Or what might need to be a little bit different about the data so that we can all use it? So we're having those conversations, which is a win. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Washburn Tech East. Its construction has allowed adults educational opportunities that hadn't had access to those previously. And also, I want to mention, for our strategic planning system, we actually have a software that we use also that tracks the completion percentage of each one of the pillars. And so the actual completion percentage of our develop homegrown talent of those objectives for Momentum 2022 is at 61% currently. So our second pillar is create vibrant and attractive places. So some of the wins that we're seeing here are team up to cleanup. Now, that's a city-led program, but we've, Momentum 2022 has been a proud partner of that, as have other community partners, to really concentrate community cleanup efforts in just a couple of neighborhoods, so that we can really see an impact from those efforts. Also, Better Cities for Pets certification. This is kind of a fun one. This comes from Mars Pet Care. Topeka was recently announced as a better city for pets, which really allows us to market ourselves as a destination for pets and their owners to come here to visit or to live. Also, downtown business and restaurant growth. Obviously, we've seen a lot of growth there. And Brew Bank coming online soon, too, is exciting. And then the plaza, obviously. I actually, I was telling Keith just a moment ago, I had the opportunity to tour it yesterday afternoon in the 105-degree heat, and it's coming along beautifully, but it was hot. And our current completion here is 63.75%. Grow a Diverse Economy is our third initiative. Some of the things we're seeing come online here are Wheatfield Village. That's a great live-work-play concept that's kind of new for Topeka. So we're really excited to see that come online. Go Topeka recently earned their AEDO certification, the only organization in the state, I still believe. Plug and Play. Plug and Play has announced that they are coming to Topeka. So Plug and Play is an accelerator program that really specializes in connecting technology startups with some of the largest corporations in the world. And here, they're going to focus most specifically on animal health. So it's a great opportunity for us to capitalize on a regional ecosystem that we have here. And the current completion here is 59.75%. Promote a Positive Image. Some of the things that we have going on here are, as Keith mentioned, the Speakers Bureau. We now have 10 community leaders who are well-versed in not only Momentum 2022, but also community stories, to be able to go out and inspire people and share that information. And those speakers are available for any group or organization that is looking for a speaker, for whether it's their monthly meeting, or luncheon, or what have you. So if you're interested in having a speaker come give a presentation, just let me know. Also on this front is an event that's called The Turning Point. I would ask all of you to save the date for this. The date is September 5th. The time is from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. Dr. Ruben West, who is a native Topeka, will be coming to Topeka to really, to facilitate a listening session about the audience experience in Topeka, about what's great in Topeka and what do we also still need to work on. And that feedback's going to be used coming out of that session. So we're really excited. I think like 500 people have already registered on Facebook. So it's going to be a massive event. So the whole community will be there. So show up and be there. And current completion in this regard is 40%. All right. And so the last initiative then is collaborate for a strong community. So some of the things that we've seen movement on here are community pride. So I think that you can probably feel a general sentiment when you log into Facebook, or maybe when you talk to your constituents, just about sort of a change in attitude. But we actually track that numerically as well. So we use a net promoter score, which is a simple one-question survey, and that survey asks, how likely are you to recommend a product? So in this case, we ask, how likely are you to recommend living in Topeka and Shawnee County? And so we ran that survey in 2017, we ran it in 2018, and we're getting ready to run it in 2019. But between 2017 and 2018, it went up 13 points, which is pretty significant. And so we're really excited to see, you know, with some of these other things going on, too, we're really excited to see how much more that has moved now in 2019. We've had numerous diversity on boards events and board trainings. The Topeka Youth Commission has come online and is active and engaged, and they're doing great things, too. And our current completion percentage here is 82%. And with that, Keith and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Keith and Kayla?
Thank you, Keith and Kayla. You didn't get a chance to speak to in more detail about the Speakers Bureau, but because I've been involved with this, I think it might be an opportunity to share who some of the people are in that Speakers Bureau, because I think it shows a good diversity of people.
Yeah.
I know some of them personally, and some of them just by reputation. But I think they will be accepted in a good cross-section representation of the city. So if you have the opportunity and have the names available, I think it'd be good to share with the council.
That sounds like a quiz.
Can you remember?
I could definitely name some of them, but I don't want to miss out on a couple people. But I will say, it is a very diverse group. It's diverse in terms of age. We've got a member of our youth council on there. We've also got a member of our senior council on there. We have all different races and ethnicities represented. And Rodrigo actually even helped us diversify our group by zip code as well. So we've made every effort to diversify in any way we can think of, by industry. They represent a variety of industries. So really, really excited to have them.
One more thing, if I may. The Ruben West event, I think it's worthy to note that special invitation has gone out to all the NIA's.
Yes.
And encourage them to bring, if they can, 10 people from each NIA, which I think is something that we discussed about, making sure that everybody gets the information that we may take for granted, because we're involved with these on a regular basis. And so the NIA's, I think, are at the core and the root of a lot of this. And so I think that's important to note, that we've really extended that hand to the NIA's to get them to get the information, have that opportunity.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Keith, you've been an amazing leader to work with. Thank you so much for all the work that you've been doing. And Kayla, thank you so much for spearheading the effort. That being said, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We now proceed with the rule call. Mayor DeLaisla?
Here.
Councilmember Hiller?
Here.
Claire?
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Lesser?
Here.
Deputy Mayor reached out earlier to indicate that she was not feeling very well. So she is at home, so our well wishes are with her. We now move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk could read. A is resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz, granting Amos Walker an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. Be his minutes of the regular meeting of August 13, 2019, and there are no applications this evening. We have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilman Jensen?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Jensen. We have a second by Councilman Emerson. Additional comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting. We have nine yes. Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to action items. Action item A, if the clerk could read. A is nornance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing and providing for the issuance of $33,270,000 aggregate principal amount of combined utility refunding and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2019A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body. Today, we conducted a sale of bonds to fund a number of capital projects for us. And I'll have Director of Administrative and Financial Services, Jessica Lemandola, come forward and give you the results of the sale.
Hello. I just want to, you know, we'll go over the sale real quick. But we also have Jeff White from Columbia Capital, our financial advisor, and Kevin Cowan, our bond counsel from Gilmore and Bell, are both here. So in the event you have more specific or in-depth questions, they're available. And I'd also like to just point out and thank our utilities team, Bob, Nicole, Braxton, who are all integral in the discussions with Moody's and just preparing for the overall deal. So we're really lucky to have that teamwork. So overall, we received six bids. Piper Joffrey was the winning bidder at about 2.5%. It was an excellent response. Six bids is just really impressive. There was just a lot of interest. I believe four of the bids came in the last seconds of the auction, with Piper coming in, I think, at the last 18 seconds. So there was definitely a lot of interest watching it, trying to price it right. You know, that's just a really great price for us. Overall, some of that reflects us. I think we're a great credit. Moody's affirmed our rating and spoke to a lot of our strengths. But it's also the market was seeing some lower ratings as well. the market was seeing some lower ratings as well. We were also the, the biggest deal in Kansas this week, I think there was about four deals, us taking about two-thirds of that. So we just had a lot of interest, it was a really good day. The refunding portion yielded about 8.45 percent savings, which is a little over $887,000 over the life of the bonds. So as we start to look at those projects, like you were saying earlier, obviously a different fund, but when we find that savings $800,000, it's, you know, it's quite impressive, and it also gives us more ability to fund our capital over at the utilities program. So it was another good day. You know, we just have a really great team, so thanks for the support.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Lemandola? Yes, Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Lemandola, that's, that's great news. I did have a question, I think last week, um, you, you mentioned that we had refinanced or maybe, I forget the term you used.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, there's a lot of talk right now that, you know, the long-term interest curve is, has been in bird where the 10-year treasury is, is a lower percent than a near. Is there, is that doing anything for us? And has there been any talk of refinancing some of the bonds we already have?
Well, we have a really active relationship with our financial advisor, so, you know, he can answer some of the more specific questions, but I think what the bond market and the overall financial market was showing us last week was that investors were looking for safety options, and a lot of times our municipal bonds are seen as that. So I, I do think some of our, um, good interest rates that we saw last weekend this week are a reflection of the market and investors trying to find a safe harbor, so. If you want more specifics, Jeff is by far the better person to answer that question.
I'll call Mr. White later.
Okay. Was I basically accurate? Okay.
Thank you.
There you go.
Additional questions? Seeing no other questions, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilman Jensen?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Jensen, do we have a second? We have a second by Councilman Cohen, although if there's no other questions for the team, we proceed by voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of $33,270,000 aggregate principal amount of combined utility refunding and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2019A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance of the issuer making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the next step that we take when we go through a bond letting process, so we just need to move this, approve this in order to move it forward.
Additional questions from the body, uh, Councilman Jensen?
I was just gonna move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Jensen, we have a second by Councilman Mays. Additional questions from the staff? No questions or comments for the staff? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Councilmember Jensen? We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to ordinance C, uh, item C in the agenda, if the clerk would read.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, approving a major amendment to the planned unit development master plan for Blue Cross and Blue Shield in order to expand the boundary to include a property at 1104 Southwest Polk, currently zoned M2, you know, multiple family dwelling district, all being within the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are, as it states, looking at, seeking approval of a change to the PUD related to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Planning and Development Director Bill Finder will review the details.
Thank you. Not, not many details left. This is pretty straightforward. There was a small property that Blue Cross Blue Shield surrounded for many, many years. They were finally able to acquire the property to expand their parking lot, which is what surrounds the property. So necessitated a change in their PUD boundary, and that's what is before you tonight to facilitate about 12 to 17 more stalls or parking for them.
Thank you. This is one of those items in which there is no public comment allowed, we're working with a PUD, and before we even go into the motion, I will say that this is also one of those items in which we have to disclose if we have had any ex parte communication. The importance of doing so is that it would allow us to testify to the public that we are able to, aside from receiving the information, to do, um, do our vote, make our votes without having been influenced by any of the communication that we have received. So at this point in time, I open it up for anybody in the body who has had ex parte communication, who would like to indicate so. Seeing no ex parte communication, all of us are attesting that we are able to make a decision without being biased by any external information. That being said, is there a motion in the body? We have a motion for approval by Councilman Hiller, that's her district, and we have a second by Councilman Mays. Additional comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item D, if the clerk would read.
D is a joint memorandum of agreement concerning group healthcare cost sharing with the labor unions for 2020 through 2022.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, tonight we have for you approval of a joint memorandum of agreement. The one thing that I want to say is that this is something that is unique to, from what I've seen in the past, and that this community negotiates with all unions together related to their health insurance. In the past, I've, my exposure has been that each union would negotiate separately for different types of benefits related to their health insurance. But this allows us to work through and have continuity among each of the unions, so I have Jackie Russell come forward, and she'll provide some history and talk about what some of the changes were as we went forward with getting approval from the joint committee that was formed related to this, so. Jeff?
Good ev- good evening, governing body. As Brent shared with you, and we have been doing this unique practice, the tentative agreement before you this evening is actually the third joint agreement with all seven of our unions that we've been able to enter into, and we started this practice in 2015. The city administration that does the meet and confer sessions with all seven unions is comprised of a member of the city manager's office, so Brent and Doug were both involved at some point during the process, finance, legal, and human resources, so we have that collective oversight working with the unions to reach the agreement that we've got before you this evening. This agreement is a tentative agreement for three years. All of the unions have ratified except for the AFT Union. The AFT Union has not had an opportunity to ratify, but their local president Larry Fairchild did share with me that he believed that the membership received the agreement positively, so I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. As far as the tentative agreement, the staff does believe that this agreement aligns with our overall strategy of providing cost-effective, comprehensive benefits that will retain our current employees and attract new quality employees to the City of Topeka, while also continuing our overall efforts to contain healthcare costs. The agreement does include a voluntary wellness incentive that strives for healthier behaviors by our members, and that's through activities, education, preventative screenings, and also active disease management. And that is toward our overall goal of containing the overall expenses for healthcare. With all of that being said, I'll go through a summary of the terms of this agreement that's before you this evening. The cost-share premium equivalents for the base plans, the employee-only portion, the city will pay 77 percent, employees will pay 23 percent, and that's for all three years of the agreement. For the dependent tiers, that's employee, spouse, employee, children, or family tiers. For 2020, the city will pay 68 percent, employees will pay 32 percent. For 2021, the city will pay 70 percent, and the employees will pay 30 percent. For 2022, the city will pay 72 percent, and employees will pay 28 percent. The wellness incentive that is a voluntary incentive for employees that participate and meet established wellness criteria will offer a savings of 13 percent off of the annual premium. That's off of the base plan tier in which the employee is enrolled in. For 2021 and 2022, we have expanded that voluntary wellness incentive for spouses who participate, and they will be eligible for an additional 1 percent savings off of their premium. This agreement also includes a tobacco surcharge, and that surcharge is for those employees or members or their spouses that use tobacco products and are not actively enrolled and engaged in a smoking cessation program. That surcharge will be $100 per month for one person, or $200 per month for two persons. The employees that are enrolled in the buy-up plan will pay the additional premium equivalent for the difference in the premium between the base plan and the buy-up plan. As recommended by the Healthcare Advisory Committee for 2020, and we anticipate that for each year of the agreement, there is a 10 percent decrease in the base plan deductible each year of this agreement, and that current deductible is $2,200. So for 2020, that deductible would move to $2,000 for individual, $4,000 for family. 2021, $1,800 individual and $3,600 for family. And 2022, $1,600 for individual and $3,200 for family. The buy-up plan deductible does reduce by $100 for 2020, and that will make the individual deductible $1,000, and the family deductible $2,000, and that deductible structure will be in place for all three years of this agreement. We will continue the same guidelines that we have established regarding premium holidays, so that will be based on reserves in the health fund balance, and, and that's driven by claims expense. The budget impact for this agreement is an increase of $345,000 for the year 2020. That does include the city paying a greater portion of the dependent tiers, as well as the 4 percent anticipated increases that were a part of the 2020 budget that, that you all adopted recently. So that's my very brief overview of this tentative agreement, and I will stand for any questions that you might have.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Russell, thank you. I'm having a hard time understanding this chart, because in 2020, we pay the lower percentage of the dependents, and it's a, the plan gets better as the years go by, but it's more money in 2020 than the following years, as a matter of fact, it's twice as much as any other year. What, what am I missing?
And I might have to have Nick Hawkins come up and explain that financial portion for you.
Good evening. So in 2020, there's a, a slightly bigger jump from what the employer pays from the current year, so I factored in that everyone who participated received the wellness incentive. So that's actually a 6 percent increase on the employer's side. The subsequent years of the contract are only, I think, between 2 and 3 percent, depending on if the, the spouse participates, so the impact in 2020 is greater than in 2021 and 2022.
Okay, I, I still understand that, but I will, maybe I'll follow back up with you tomorrow or something.
Yeah, so basically what the, the chart is showing is year-over-year increase, so there's a, so that's the...
So this is the increase, so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yes.
But just say, just say for 2020, it's $350,000, for 2021, it's actually 400, it's $500,000, $157,000 more.
More. The total impact at the end of the, at the end of the contract would be that $618.
Okay, I, I still don't see that, because every year, we're gonna pay $345,000 more?
I, I, I understand where you're, you're, you're going on that, so from a budget perspective, that number will already be built into the 2021 budget, we would anticipate needing to make sure that we're budgeting for that extra $157,000, because the $345 would already be factored in.
So each year, that's the increase over the previous year?
Yes.
Not, so instead of $618,000, it should really be like 1.2 million?
Right.
And here, okay, okay.
I, I understand where you're, you're going on that one, so.
Yeah, it looks like it's only, it's cost us like half as much in years two or three, but it's not, it's, okay.
Yeah, that, that's pretty consistent with what we've done with the, the past union contracts, and we show that, but we can make that more transparent in the future to...
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. If I can piggyback on that, I too was struggling with the chart, but in a different way. Could you talk a little bit, one or both of you, about what impact this, how the, how the fund is doing and how people are actually drawing on the fund affects whether we're gonna have to raise additional money to take care of those expenses? And you mentioned, for instance, at the 340, just now, that the 345 assumed that everybody got the wellness benefit, but they might not. In fact, and there's a, Jackie probably knows the percentage that aren't right now, but either way, is the fund healthy enough that we're expecting that this would be better benefits to our staff, but not an additional cost to the taxpayer, or is there a net cost to the taxpayer in here?
Jim?
I, I would just say, overall, the health fund has been performing very well, and again with the, you know, you notice in the 2020 budget, healthcare expenses, the overall budget went down, and that's reflective of just the rates that we've actually been seeing, so we had a 4 percent increase over the current rate, is what we budgeted in the 2020 budget, but if you actually looked at the overall budget, it went down, because we have been performing very well, and the rates that we've been seeing have been reflective of that.
So in a way, we're sharing that success of the program.
And if I could just add another piece to this, is that the wellness incentive, as we have progressed that over the years, there are fewer people that do attain that incentive, and some that elect not to participate, so right now, we do have about 82 percent participation in the wellness incentive, everyone does not participate. And the way our premium equivalents are established each year are based on the anticipated expenses that we receive from all of the healthcare vendors, and then we do have two layers of stop-loss coverage or insurance coverage to protect the, the overall fund from, from high increases of, of claims expense. There is an individual deductible on each individual claim at $150,000, and then for the entire group, it is set at 120 percent of expected expenses. So if our expenses reach more than 20 percent greater than what is anticipated, then there's insurance coverage that kicks in, and so those are protections that have been put in place since the health fund did go broke several years ago to try to prevent those things from recurring again in the future.
Thank you, thank you, Beth.
Additional questions? Councilmember, please.
Thank you. Jackie, number five, let's talk about the city, employees that are not on the city health plan, and I know that this dates $50 per month.
To, to utilize the city's onsite clinic?
Right.
Yes.
Can we get it any lower? I mean, I, I think that's quite a bit, if, can they do, how, how did we come up with $50 a month? Could they do per visit?
Well, how we came up that, with that through the negotiation process, and this is the, the same in this tentative agreement as it is in the current agreement, was that that would be the... that would be the equivalent of two trips to the doctor per month. And so our, our office visit co-pay is $25. So that's how we arrived at the $50 per month for utilizing the clinic. Because if they did have to go more frequently, it would be less than having to go to the doctor. And other things that are included in that are all of the lab work that is not an extra fee, that they would incur an extra fee if they were going to their doctor. So that is, that is how we arrived at that as an incentive to try to get those that aren't on the plan. And we have very low participation. I think it's maybe less than five employees that do take advantage of that, but I don't think that that is attributed to the $50 per month expense. I think it is attributed to the, the fee for the employee-only being so low that they take the total comprehensive coverage rather than just the clinic coverage.
I, I just think that, I mean, not everybody goes to the doctor twice a month. So to have, you know, when I, when I go to the doctor, my, my fee is, well, it depends on where I go. If I go to express care, it's higher than my regular doctor, but it's still like I'm writing a check for $50. So, I mean, but I don't go twice a month. So what I'm trying to do is see how we can reel people in to pay for it. Because it's there, we want them to utilize it, and then maybe they'll jump on board, you know? But, and, and I don't think that it's so full that we don't have room for that, but I don't, I think $50 a month is kind of, they can go to express care for 30.
Our co-pay for express care is 45.
And it depends on what kind of plan you're on as well.
It does, and the thing that I would just have you consider, and certainly this is something that we could consider in future negotiations with, with the seven unions, but one set of labs could be well in excess of $500, and they're only paying that one flat fee per month. And so we, we are trying to balance getting them access to care that we want them to have, but also being fiscally responsible with the expenses on the back end.
Well, I'd like to see us work on that, that we can have all of our, even those that don't, at a, at a, at a better cost than $50 a month. That's, that's what I would like to see. And to my colleagues, I'd like to say, the state just opened up our new wellness center, and it was in June. And so we were, the city was way above the curve with the state, and we don't have to pay as long as we go from eight to five or whatever is when we have a plan. So I'm looking forward to that. But I've always asked about this because, you know, I think we could get more people to utilize our wellness center, and I think that's what we're trying to do. And I, I understand the cost. I, I get that, but I'm advocating for the poor people.
All right. Additional comments or questions? You had one.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Sorry, Mayor. I, I was looking back because I didn't remember this on last week's agenda, and I was just, I guess, maybe a question for, for Mr. Trout. Is there a reason why we just have this as a one-week item rather than a discussion and then an action item?
Yes, because what we do is, through the negotiation process that we did with this, this is something that we've figured out where we want to be related to this as a policy. And so that was our intent, is that just, we had it as a one, a one-week item.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Councilwoman Heller.
Well, I'll follow up with Councilwoman Emerson. I agree. I think we still need to discuss it and understand it before we vote on it so that it fits. So no harm done this time, I think. Good, good point. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions at this point, one is the pleasure of the body. We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Lesser. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Jensen makes a second. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item E. If the clerk would read.
E is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, canceling the governing body meeting on October 1st, 2019.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I know we all love meetings, but in this particular case, having a meeting on October 1st with our intent to be traveling many of us to Montgomery for the intercity visit, it made sense that we should consider canceling this meeting. And with the items that I expect that we're seeing on the agenda schedule for October, September, October, don't feel there's a need to schedule an additional meeting, so we would simply cancel and only have two meetings in October. So I think this makes the most sense to allow maximum participation in the intercity visit.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Councilman Cohen, seconds. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we proceed by voting. Now, don't be all excited. Everybody just jumped on that one.
We have eight. We have eight yes. Councilmember Ortiz voting no.
Eight having voting yes, the motion passes. At this point in time, there are no further items to be discussed for the body. We do proceed with announcements if the clerk would read. Oh, there is no clerk announcements. So we move on to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I sent you all an email today announcing that Mr. Ed Colazo has been chosen as our independent police auditor. And so with that news, it'll be a couple of months before he takes over and that, starts that role. So we'll do some more information and introduce him to the community and bring him here, in case you don't already know Ed, but just to ensure the individuals. And so we'll begin working with Ed to outline the position and move forward with getting that open for business in order to citizens to be able to come and address him if they have concerns within regards to the police department. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I will say that I am very appreciative of the chief of police. Several of us have been having the opportunity to take a look at what's happening in, with the camps, the homeless camps in, over in North Topeka. And the, the intelligence and the understanding and being able to go there and interact with the individuals that are in the camp was very meaningful. Today, I was able to go with Councilwoman Padilla, and Councilman Mays was also in one of the cars. So thank you so much, chief, for just allowing us an opportunity to be there. I want to say thank you as well to Antioch Baptist Church. This weekend, Pastor Hicks had several members of the community come to the church and, and challenge the parents and the students. We had some really great people talking. The coach for the football team at Washburn was there with some of the guys at the football team. We had Dean Carla Pratt from the law school at Washburn as well. We had Dr. Tiffany Anderson at the church. Chief spoke as well, and I was there. And, and it was, it was a great conversation about community building and, and how do we look at our children and understand that? I was once asked a question that still is like a tickler for me, which is, when is enough enough? And my answer to that still remains very true. Enough is enough 18 years ago, when our kids learned that violence is the only answer to solve a problem. And until we are not able to understand that we need to work with our children, that we need to build relationships, that sometimes kids need more than mom and dad, and it's not that mom and dad are bad, but that they need mom, dad, and step-uncles, and aunts, and additional parents and family, we're going to continue seeing violence in our communities. And it's not a Topeka issue. It's a national issue. It's a global issue. So it was wonderful to be there and then wrap up a church service with the Topeka High drum band. I mean, it was, it was just like, you, you were moving because it was, you know, Antioch, but then you were really moving at the end. I also want to say thank you to Hills. I had the honor of being present at their expansion announcement, 20,000 square foot facility. It was wonderful to have the CEO of Colgate Palmolive here in Topeka. And one of the proudest moments that I had was having the chance of talking to Noel before we all walked out to the, to the tent where we were having the event. And he said how great his experience was staying at the Cyrus and how beautiful the downtown was. And he was talking about how all of these investments that we're making to have a better quality of place and quality of life are making it such that it helps them attract top talent. And, and it was really interesting to hear it from the CEO of a major corporation to tell us, hey, what you guys are doing is right on the dot. Keep investing in your community because it's wonderful. And they were sharing with me that at one point in time, before we had our Cyrus, they were not having individuals stay in Topeka hotels. They were driving people back and forth. However, now, not only are they having them stay here, but they're able to walk to their offices over on 8th Street. So it was, it was just one of those things to let the body know, thank you so much. I know that when we talk about quality of place, quality of life investments, we always are wondering, you know, is this real economic development? Is this what we're supposed to be doing? And here we have confirmation that absolutely, yes, we're on the right track. And then finally, I want to say thank you to Rodrigo Dorador. Rodrigo came here from Harvard. He's a master student in his second year, and he spent 10 weeks in the city of Topeka. Rodrigo visited several NIA's, visited every dive bar that I didn't even know existed, met with a whole bunch of individuals in our community. And by the time that 10 weeks were gone, he sent Matt and the team of people that he worked with a beautiful email talking about how pretty much he felt like he had family. And, and this is what Topeka is all about. It's not just exclusive for Harvard people. It's, it's something that our community has, that we have an open heart and we're welcoming. And that's one of the things that I love to celebrate about our community. Rodrigo did wonderful work. He has several individuals that are going to be speakers in our community. I'm not going to mention them all because Mike Padilla was wanting them all, but I don't remember the names of all of them, but we do have Clint Patty. We have Manny Heron. We have the owner of Verge, Kevin Christensen. We, we have like a really diverse, Prochaska, Susanna Prochaska, that was her old last name, but I mean, it's, we have this really diverse, cool group of people that are not the typical top-level leaders of organizations that you typically see out there. These are just community members that devoted a lot of their time to learn about our stories and share them in our community. So to Rodrigo, thank you so much for your contributions to this community, and you will always have a home in Topeka. Councilwoman Jensen.
So once again, as I do every August and September, it's hot. You have air conditioning, your pets do not. I want to congratulate the mayor who, this afternoon, checked the pavement temperature before she took her dog on a run. Remember, you have shoes, they don't. So keep in mind that they, they can't cool off like you can. I want to congratulate the Metro, Robert Nugent, I believe, is the new executive director over there. I am very interested to meet with him and try to sort out how our two organizations move forward to solve our transit problems. I know it's been a little dicey the past couple of months, but my hope is that, Robert, if you're, if you're watching us, let's work together. Transit is critically important to the success of our community, and you are both now in the drivers and the hot seat. So good luck. I also want to thank the Metro Board. Recently, they dug really deep and made some fair corrections, which I think will better help folks in this community, and I think that's commendable. So I want to thank them for their work in trying to balance the needs of their organization with the needs of their ridership. Other than that, have a great week, everybody.
Councilman Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too wanted to thank the Topeka Police Department. Last night, we had our District Seven strengthening police and community partnerships meeting. It had a, a pretty good turnout, I thought, and Chief Cochran was, was there and, and several community officers, and it was a good, a good time. And then also, like, as you mentioned, the, the tour of the riverfront today that, that we went on was, was eye-opening, to say the least, and, and I appreciate the time that they took to show us around there. Thanks.
Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman Lesser. Councilwoman Heller.
Just briefly, I'm hearing good news on the Metro bikes issue. Looks like some things are coming together. It's not final final yet. Apparently, there were over 40 individuals and over 30 groups that stepped up to, to say they wanted to help make it work. They've got, they've got a lead on a different company where the per bike per month overhead is less. They've got a lead on how to change out the broadband connectivity so that when 2G goes down, they can be linked up in another way. Those bikes that we already have were some new ones. And so just keep an eye, and anybody who offered to help, go ahead and weigh in and let them know that you're still in on the, on the deal, but that's exciting. Other than that, got a, got a ride around the homeless camp with the chief. He kind of hijacked me last, last week, actually. So that was, was good, good, good to see everybody pulling together to figure out solutions for, for them, for the rescue mission and all. Other than that, it's the last two weeks of summer. Be safe, enjoy the wind down. Let's hope it does, and go from there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz. Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everyone know that this Sunday, the 25th, at 12:30, Fellowship Highcrest Church, who meets at Avondale East, and in conjunction with the Highcrest NIA, is holding a neighborhood peace walk. It'll be starting at 12:30 at Betty Phillips Park. Just as everyone knows, we've had some unfortunate incidents of violence in our community and even, even the nation over the last, seems like the last few weeks have been bad in particular. Just an opportunity to get together and say, you know, violence is not the answer and show the solidarity. So 12:30, Sunday afternoon, at Betty Phillips Park and in Highcrest, wear orange. And this is not an excuse to skip church. Go to church and come to this at 12:30. Thank you.
Councilman Padilla. Okay, seeing none, we do have two individuals signed up for public comment.
My name is Carol Marple. I do live in the southwest part of Shawnee County. I also own a house here on Aitken Rice Road. You're probably thinking, what is she talking to us about? I came here tonight to talk about the $10 million family park. I know that you have all received a copy of the contract with the city and the county where the two merged. I've made a packet because I firmly believe it's really hard to follow what goes on. If you have something to look at and you talk about numbers, it's easier to follow if it's written down. And I'm very sorry, I don't have enough for the, everybody in the audience. What I first wanted to show you is the county commission districts. On that map, I have marked approximately where the Midwest Aquatic Center is. That is the location where the new $10 million family park has been slated to be put. I also marked where Camp Daisy Hyman was. A lot of you will remember that discussion that we had a couple of years ago. Commissioner Archer refused to discuss buying Camp Daisy. This was approximately 150 acres of a pristine park, which was a turnkey operation. This park could have been bought for less than $600,000. Camp Daisy would have filled the southwest desert, as now we're referring to it. I don't know where it was a couple of years ago when we were talking about Camp Daisy, but now we have a southwest desert. It would have served the south and the northwest county residents, much like Lake Shawnee does for the north and the southeast residents. There would have been trails, camping, horseback riding, fishing, a community center. It was endless possibilities. The next thing that I have is a quadrants, and this is a couple of years old. It was obtained from Parks and Rec. It shows you where all the parks are. The next one that you need to look at is how much money the Midwest Aquatic Center generates. From January 1 to August 1 of this year, it generated $179,000. Now, the payment on this park is $647,000. That is the payment, folks. We're not even talking about running it. The payment on the $10 million aquatic, or, um, family park would be approximately Again, that does not talk about what it will take to run it. We're going to ma- We're going to make a total payment of $1,497,000. That is a payment. Nobody has said how we're going to fund this, how we're going to make it run. The next is a map of the park and the land up there on 21st and Uris Road. And I went and looked this up. Every piece of information that I am giving to you, I've cored or looked up on the county The Midwest Aquatic Center is actually only 26.73 acres, and it is listed as an ornamental park. The definition of an ornamental-
Ms. Marple, your time has expired. I know it didn't go off. Would you like to have an extension?
Oh, yes. I'm just getting rolling. Can I please have an extension?
How many minutes?
Well, I went through four minutes pretty fast. Could I ask for six and maybe not use it?
The limit is typically four.
Four minutes, and I'll try to hurry.
We have a motion by Councilman Emerson. We have a second by Councilmember Padilla. We now proceed by voting.
I'd like to thank you for voting this extension. I'm going to skip ahead a little bit. The reason I'm here presenting this to you is because I attempted to present this to the county on the last Thursday meeting, and I was told they would not take any public comments. I was also, when I asked why not, because I tried to make my public comments at the Shawnee County Public Building Commission hearing, where they ratified this resolution. To me, that was an appropriate time to make the comments. I raised my hand, and I was told there would be no public comments accepted. After the meeting was adjourned, I went up and I asked why not, and apparently I'm pretty threatening because the Commissioner Archer asked that the county council come and rescue him. So back to my spiel, but the Midwest Aquatic Center has the 26 acres. The Cypress Ridge Golf Course has 205 acres. The Shawnee County CIP process was approved on May 5th. And then you might ask, we need a definition of what does CIP mean here? They use plan, project, and policy. Who knows? They all have different meanings. The only part of the CIP meeting that I want to read to you is that CIP project requests must have a funding plan for maintenance and operating costs identified in the project request. Where feasible, priority should be given to those projects that will result in a reduction in operating cost or additional revenue to cover operating cost. Okay, I would like you to continue on. When you receive, go to the family park facility. This is the CIP that was presented to the county commissioners. This does not meet their criteria. Take a look at it. I made a timeline. May the 28th, the CIP for the $10 million project was submitted to audit finance. It was due June 1st. This was it. August 5th, they voted to approve a $10 million family park. Commissioner Archer and Rippon voted yes. Commissioner Cook, no. Now, since it's my presentation, I get to say this because it is a thorn in my side. On that same meeting, August 5th, they voted for $2 million for requests from various departments for various needs. One of the requests that they voted on was that Commissioner Cook made a motion to approve $55,400 for tornado sirens and an outdoor warning system, adding the additional tornado sirens in the Oakland area and other areas where the emergency management deemed it deficient. Commissioner Cook and Commissioner Rippon voted yes. Commissioner Archer voted no. Now, I personally seriously doubt that anybody that does not take into consideration the safety of the people that live in his community is going to really show any claim that they can care about what the citizens want. I will say on August 10th, they voted for $45,594 for placement of solar- Okay, I'm out of time. Can I ask for another two minutes?
We have a motion for Councilman, by Councilman Ortiz, second by Councilman Emerson. We proceed by voting. You may proceed.
Thank you very much again. Because I'm, okay, they voted for $45,000 for placement of solar-powered outdoor warning sirens for the Cypress Ridge and Midwest Aquatic Center. Commissioners Archer, Cook, and Rippon voted yes. You make your own conclusions. They approved on the August 15th commission meeting also a request for $257,000 for Hughes Park. They are going to resurface the pickleball courts, concrete for replacement sidewalks with ADA accessible walkways and concrete paths. Now, this is how they, this is just so scattered. We don't know what they want. If you look and read these motions, which I have included to you, they never talk about Deer Creek Trail in this CIP. Then they also talk about fixing the Cypress Gulf Building, either replacing it or tearing it down. We have no idea, except that there will be 20 pickleball courts for this $10 million. Folks, you have got to get involved. Think about the parks in your districts, the parks that your kids play on, the community centers. This $10 million passes. There is no money. Deferred maintenance is estimated at $14 million. If we have this $10 million, we could make inroads to the deferred maintenance, and that would affect every one of you, everyone in your districts. You have got to put the pressure on the county. They need to do what's right. And I will stop, and thank you very much for allowing me the time to say this. I greatly appreciate it.
The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Clark Trammell.
Good evening. I'll pick up very quickly. I just, the reason why I show up in the end of your meetings is just to bring a few notes to the table for you all to be aware of that maybe I don't hear presented, and to let the community that's watching and here know that there's two sides to this and that we're all on the same page. I talk to a lot of people in the community as an advocate and an activist, and what I'm reporting to you are things that I pick up that isn't just Clark Trammell, but it's a presentation from a lot of voices. I received today in the mail, just briefly, this thing called "The Guide: Parks and Rec", and picking up on what Carol Marple just said, if you all don't have it, you should get a copy and look on the inside where it says Shawnee County Parks Recreation Vision and Recreation Mission. I'm not going to take up any more time, but it's pretty clear what they say and what they do might be two different things. But the positive side of that is, and with TMTA, picking up on what Councilman Jensen said, you've got two new leaders in two key roles in this community. And I would hope that you all, as the city council, would bring them here to engage in an ongoing conversation, to get to know them, to give them your input, and look at what's happening because what they do impacts every district and citizen in this community. It's vitally important that we get engaged from every aspect. I wanted to bring some very positive things to the table, and I'm very pleased. I've been critical at times, and I stand by the criticism I passed on, but at the same time, I'd like to present positive things. There is a lot of good stuff going on. A lot of it was presented tonight. Bill Fehlander presented what they're doing and planning. That all looked good. But what it also shows us is we can do more with less, and that there is capacity in the departments to do more, and we should expect that. I was very pleased to hear what I heard. I attended last night Councilwoman Lesser's meeting for the SBCP, Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships. Excellent program. The city needs to understand that program and get engaged with it. The chief of police and his staff and all of you have engaged in something that is so good for this community, and I want you to hear it from this side of the microphone that it's being heard, and it's excellent. Another program that's out there that needs to be mentioned is the Impact Avenues Program that is sponsored by Advisors XL. What a program that's going to be. I don't think the community is aware of what that is, and they need to be. Look at the Northeast Learning Center that's here, Momentum 2022. Just the attitude and the atmosphere of these meetings and the relationships that I'm seeing in this community, there are things you can't put your finger on, but you can feel it. And I compliment you all for that, and you need to hear it. There are good things happening. There's also some troubles that we're aware of, but we're picking it up with the dynamic nature of how we're moving. The mission is very concerning, a bedrock institution. And if we're going to spend tax dollars, we need to understand why it is where it is, what it's going to do to get out of it, and how it's going to go long-term. Or we should stand over here and see that it happens in some other fashion. We also have the TMTA that needs your input. I just mentioned that earlier. So we have a lot going on that is stressed, but the positive side of this is grabbing the stress side and pulling it upward and forward. And I compliment you. The city manager was at the meeting last night. Just you all being out there to be touched, talked to, and show that you support what you're doing is awesome. So I thank you all. Good job.
Thank you very much. That concludes all the public comments for this evening. There are no executive sessions. I'm looking at legal to confirm that I'm correct. At this point, the meeting is adjourned.